444-0744 and use the code 156034. So we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and flag over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda, I'll turn it over to Dr. Costa, who would like to acknowledge our board, previous Board Secretary Joan Rice.
So Joan Rice, who served as our secretary for the past 10 years, has ventured down to Cary, North Carolina with Fred and is enjoying retirement, but we didn't want to miss an opportunity to thank her for the many years of service. We appreciate everything she's done in taking such detailed, accurate minutes for our board for the past 10 years. We were delighted to have her here. We know all of the wonderful things that the Rices have done for our community. So with that, I just want to say a big thank you, Joan, publicly for all that you've done, and I wish you and Fred all the best down in sunny North Carolina. You will be missed, so we will look forward to seeing you maybe in our warmer months as you come back and visit in the area. So best wishes to Joan and also to Fred, but a special thanks to Joan for 10 years of wonderful service to our school board. Thank you, Joan.
Any other board members? Everybody good? Thank you, Joan.
And just in just one thing, in Joan's honor, we have obviously recognized her with a bouquet of flowers. We have a card that we're sending off, so we would, we just want to make sure that she recognizes how much we appreciate everything she's done. And with that said, we'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Colleen Fosson, who is no stranger to the Hampton community, who will be taking our minutes from this point going forward. So we welcome you, Colleen. We're so delighted to have you here, and as we know, you've got big shoes to fill, but we know you're very capable, and you come from a family that knows the value of service to our town and community. So welcome, Colleen, and thank you. It's great to have you here. Yep, welcome.
Okay, Board Member Updates. Budget Committee, Ginny?
Budget Committee meets next Tuesday night with the school board, and so they are looking forward to hearing all our information. We also have Octo, uh, no, October, December 1st and 3rd that we're meeting with the Budget Committee for our budget review. Brian just came out with that yesterday.
Oh, yeah, I have not heard. So yes, could you send me those dates?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Were those listed on that calendar that we have in the back?
No, because I did not have them as of yet.
All right, okay. We'll, we could probably-
Oh, add that, yeah.
Well, we could update them on Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay. Wellness Committee, Andrea?
I don't have anything at this point in time. We just haven't been able to get together.
Good. Just asking, Dave, can you guys hear us okay out there?
I can't hear, well, I can't hear any audio. I can hear you, but it's not coming from the speaker.
Okay, all right. Will speak up, how's that? Okay. School Boards Association, I have nothing. They're, they're not having any of their trainings because of the pandemic, so I just don't have anything for anybody right now. SLC Frank, nothing on that. Recreation Department, Andrea?
Mostly-
Speak up, please.
Okay, I think mostly the Rec Department is hoping that at some point we will be able to open up either gym space or the community room. I mean, they would like to have more programs going, but they understand that we have to do it in a safe manner, so we may hear more from Renee possibly at our next meeting.
And Pepper and Andrea, policy? I know we're gonna-
Yeah, we're, we're looking at adopting the sexual harassment and violence policy, but looking at adopting the one that's been put forward by the New Hampshire School Board Association. So we'll be discussing that later, and we have both of those in our packet.
Pepper, professional development, anything?
I don't think we've even begun to look at it for next year.
We're, we're all gonna talk about-
You're all set for this year.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about calendar with regard to professional development, but other than that, no.
PTA, Ginny?
PTA just did a very successful mom sale and was very successful, and I don't know about any other activities that are going on now. I think they're as disappointed as everyone else that they can't do things like we could.
Strategic Plan, nothing on that.
Nothing, no.
Curriculum, Andrea?
Well, I know the schools have been doing some testing, and they continue to do more testing in the month of October, and I believe all the information and data that they're collecting obviously is being used and implemented to help teachers differentiate instruction for their students. They're also, teachers are also working on reviewing and continuously updating their curriculum maps. The staff continues to train in new technology methods and best practices for hybrid learning. They also continue to attend either webinars or trainings covering COVID-19, diversity, suicide prevention, harassment and bullying, and, and there are specifically some things that I know the special ed teachers have been, have been training on as well to help our students there. So that's it.
Okay. And this is not listed, but I thought I would mention it. Frank and myself have been going to negotiations meetings with the teachers, as, as well as Mr. Lannan, Dr. Costa, and Attorney Mike Elwell. So those are moving forward, and I have no other information to give you at this time, but just to know that those are ongoing. Now, we don't have people from the public here, but it says public comment. I'll warn the public that I'm going to have another public comment session after we hear from Adam Edgar about HYA basketball. So Will, Mike, not Mike, Adam. Come on up.
Mixing our Edgars.
Yes.
Well, at least I didn't say Luke.
So you're okay if I remove the mask?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First of all, let me see if I can get this hooked up. Let's see. Good, thanks. So my name is Adam Edgar. I am the HYA Commissioner of Basketball, and I just, first of all, I want to say thank you for letting us come to speak today. We know that you have been put in charge of making difficult decisions for months, going all the way back to last March, and I think this is also another difficult decision. We're here today to try to do our best to get things lined up in the event, in the event that we can hold a season for our kids. HYA is all about serving our community, and we want to make sure that we have things in line if, if we're able to do that. So in order to do that, in order to run our program, we have a few things we've got to talk about with gyms, but let's see. So we will try to make this short because we know you have a lot to do. I wanted to talk about HYA for a little bit, also talk about the basketball program that we run, what we would like to do for this upcoming year. As a board, as an HYA Board, we sort of see three possibilities of how we could move forward and an outline of our COVID mitigation plan. So I was actually going to turn this over to Jason Lever. Jason is the President of HYA, who's going to talk a little bit about what HYA is doing in our community. Jason?
Hi, Jason Lever, President of HYA.
Aye.
Hi, thank you for your time. First, I would, I just want to thank Dr. Costa for being such a great partner. We've had many conversations over the last few months about our position as HYA and being supportive of our school system. We want to continue to make sure we have a great partnership and that we're all working together. So thank you so much for taking the calls and the emails-
Absolutely.
-as well. So just, you know, a little bit about the history of HYA. HYA has, has, has been involved in this community since 1962. So through that, we've touched, we've impacted many children. You, you, you and your families have probably been involved in our programs throughout the years, and it's just, it's really exciting over the last few years how we've grown. So as an HYA umbrella, we've also added field hockey, we've added volleyball, we've added kindergarten programs. So we really expanded to get, you know, from the three and four-year-olds all the way up to the, the eighth graders, get the whole family involved. You know, and for me, there's nothing better than going to a gym on a Saturday morning and seeing all these kids having fun and smiling, or going to soccer Saturday and seeing, you know, everybody having a great time. You know, actually, my son was talking the other day about, you know, what do you get out of it? I'm like, I get out of it seeing those smiles. Like, the kids don't know, nor should they know or care about all the hard work us adults put in. We, our job is to make sure that they're having fun at the end of the day, and they're learning, they're learning teamwork, they're learning respect, you know, and it gives that, that middle kid that we've always talked about. Our focus is, is on that middle child to be able to offer them a really solid program within our, within our town, so they don't have to go to these private programs, they don't have to leave town. So, you know, as, as far as basketball, I mean, it's, it's personally, I just absolutely love, I never played basketball growing up, I was a hockey guy, but as far as I'm concerned, I'm like, you know, I'm the next best basketball coach that there has been out there. It's, it's been awesome. The kids have fun. Us coaches have just as much fun as the kids, you know, and it's, it's just, it's been a great opportunity. So, you know, as Adam spoke, he's going to take you through the program. I just want to touch on the, the history and the impact that we've had about the community. But I just want to refer back to what I said before. We're here as partners. We're here, we know whatever decision comes out of the school board, we understand, we'll accept, and we'll work together, however, however that may be. But I just want to say thank you for your time and look forward. Thank you. All right.
Talk about the history, I still have a picture of myself in third grade at Center School, playing for USC. I think Jason hit on most of this right here. So why, why do this? Why do this now? It's simple. It's to get our kids active, exactly what you guys in the school are working towards. It's to be safe, it's to have fun, and it's also about making those connections in the community. The last six or seven months have been really difficult, I think, for a lot of families, for a lot of kids, and for a lot of adults, and I think HYA can be that focal point for our community. Some of the givens going forward that we acknowledge and that we want to make sure you know we know, and that is, it can really only occur if the cases are low in our area. We know that. We're, we're well aware that at any moment, we may have to pull the plug if we are able to get into the gyms. I think we just want to say that right up front, because the most important thing is keeping our kids in the community safe. So I just want you to know right away. Second, we wouldn't plan on starting until after December 5th, that'd be the end of the first trimester. The program would begin with two weeks of practice from there until that December break. We'd like to get into the gyms on Saturday if possible, just for practices, so teams would not be playing each other. We would then go on and hold games on our Saturday mornings like we have for the last 40 years. We would run the season, it would be a shortened season, only six games, January 9th through February 13th. And just like in the past, we'd try to run it in the morning from 8:00 to 2:30, depending how things are going, we could look at possibly having a playoff. And as we've always done, we're able to get a one-hour practice slot in one of the SAU90 gyms. Now, just so you know, like, we have been looking at the numbers and how we could run this, because in the past, Dan, actually, who's going to speak in a little bit, last year ran a, ran a pre-K kindergarten program that I wish you got to see. I wish you were, it was amazing watching these kids and the adults. I don't know how they handled it. But I think this year, unfortunately, we're going to have to limit HYA basketball to third through eighth grade, and I think it comes down to gym space. In the past, we've utilized the RIM and the barn, and this year, A, we don't feel comfortable with that, and B, right now, they're booked. So just looking at the numbers so you're aware, we have done the homework to try to figure out how we could get this in, where we picture having our seventh and eighth graders here at Hampton Academy, our fifth and sixth boys and girls at Marston, and the third and fourth down at Center is the plan. So our COVID-19 response policies, this is just a rough outline, and what I really wanted to do was to introduce Dan Griffin, just to speak briefly on it, because we know you got a lot to do here today. Dan is the Commissioner for HYA Baseball, and he's also the Commissioner for Little Warriors. So he has much more experts, expertise at the moment than I do in how to handle a program like this. So I was going to let him speak for just a moment, if that's okay.
Thanks again, folks. So really, we ran, you know, and it's different, it was outdoors, but we ran a very successful baseball season this year with 240 kids, ran it for about two and a half months, and then we also, right now, we're in Little Warriors football mode. We checked the kids' temperatures, we haven't had any incident, we've had about 14% of our organization tested already, that all came back negative, and that was just because of schools and everything else that they had to get tested from. Everybody's come back negative. We have made the decision at certain times to, to close down the program this past weekend. HYA took a pause based on what was happening in one of the, two of the programs that were in the area. And then football, which isn't part of HYA, just, I'm just speaking to it, we made the decision this weekend to not go to Merrimack and play because of what would hit the news on Thursday night. So we're really trying to be as responsible as possible. All of our guidelines are based on, not just SAU90, but also based on the Governor's Task Force, and up until this point, they really have worked. And like I said, we, we want to do the right thing for the community, for the kids. I mean, honestly, the most important thing for me, what keeps me up at night, is really just, you know, kids, like, physical health and mental health. I mean, we saw both sides of it over the last six months. I think some of the kids had some, there was a lot of kids that had troubles, unfortunately, during, during when we were on lockdown for a couple months before the summer, and then the state opened up a little bit. And then I saw it with football, there was kids that were, you know, hadn't done anything since last March or played basketball last year, coming to football, and now they're getting in great shape again, and they're happy, and the parents are happy, and people are thanking us. And the kids, you go down to a baseball field in June or July, we started in July, you don't even remember. Like, you watch these kids, they totally forgot they were on lockdown for, for three months, so it was awesome to see. They were still doing COVID precautions, but their smiles, they were there. So we're going to take this stuff seriously, and I know, Adam, we're going to go back and, and really look at what the protocols will be for basketball to make it, to make sure the schools stay safe. But they've been well proven in not just HYA organizations, but other organizations that have done indoor things along the seacoast over the past three months. So that's all I have. Thank you.
In conversations with various members of the HYA Board, I just, I really got to stress again, one of the things we really want to make sure we do is that we don't put into jeopardy all the hard work that's happening here at Marston and at Center. We know the sacrifices those teachers have made, we know the sacrifices the students and the parents have made. So when or if, hopefully it's, it doesn't happen, we would be ready to shut that, shut it down. I just want to make sure we're clear on that, because I know the sacrifices as a parent that have been made. So these are our thoughts. These are our thoughts for today, and then we can discuss it for questions. There was three proposals. There's, there's number one, which would be full implementation. This would include incorporating the policies that we would develop with you in consultation. Second, now that one, that one is, would be if everything is running so smoothly around here and the caseload is essentially zero. Two, we'd be similar to the first model, but limit spectators to one parent or guardian. We would like to really try to, if, if we need to, to keep those numbers down in the gym for obvious reasons. If people are still not comfortable with that, we could look at a model where we had no Saturday games. It could be a possibility, maybe we switch those to practices or workshop, or there's that possibility that we're just not able to run it. So we sort of see those as, as ideas, and what we ask of you guys today is that if we were to try to get this program going, what we really need is, we need the permission of the school board to utilize the gyms. That's really, that's really the tough part. And I threw some important dates on here, but this is mostly for HYA people to be aware of. What it's really going to hinge on is, as a community, do we feel like it is safe to run this program in the gyms? And I understand fully that that's a difficult choice for you to make, but if we are able to do it, I, for myself as the Commissioner, I want to have all my ducks in a line so we can get this thing going. That's pretty much it on my part, and I'm sorry if we went longer than, than you were hoping, but if you have any questions, I think any of the three of us could answer them.
You are aware that we're closed through the first semester?
I am, which my understanding was December 5th, is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay, I did know that, yes. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Mike, oh, go ahead, Frank.
Hello, go ahead.
My question is, is if I look at that, Adam, you need to get a decision from us probably before our next board meeting.
I, in order for things to get pulled together smoothly on our end-
Okay.
-it would be preferable.
All right.
Yes.
Which would mean that we would have to make a decision tonight?
Again, that's-
Right, I know, in an ideal-
Right.
What would be your drop-dead time?
Huh, I should have prepared for that question. In class, I know all the questions the kids are going to ask.
Well, our next board, our next board meeting is November 10th or?
I would say-
It's November 10th.
Is your next meeting?
Yeah.
If we had an, if we had an idea that it was going to happen, the issue is that we have to give registrations, teams, shirts, coaches-
Right.
There's actually quite a bit of stuff. If we had to wait, I don't know, Jason?
What are your thoughts on that? My, my thought would be if we kind of proceeded as normal, you know, based, based on the hope, the game, the access to it, we proceed as normal, not necessarily purchase the shirts until the next board meeting, it's all just finalized. But I mean, from a registration and sign-up piece, I think we could do that, kind of go down and say, hey, you know, in, the parents have been amazing, and you guys are all aware, we did get the possible, so we can, during our registration, we can put the verbiage in there, the big caveat, we just made it actually happen, but we keep going forward. At least that way, we get the right, right things like that.
Okay.
That sounds, yes, that's feasible.
I, as one board member, I would say that I would, I would like nothing more or better than to see this program go. I, I coached in HYA and have been involved in it and so on and so forth. It's a great program, and quite honestly, our kids need it. However, okay, there are some things that we need to overcome. I don't know if we can or we can't. Ginny?
I think Frank, did you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no. My, I have several concerns. Number one, on your chart, you didn't have temperature taken, which is critical, okay? And not only for the kids, because you're in that timeframe where, forget COVID-19 right now, let's put that on the back burner, but you're going into the flu season, fevers, et cetera. So have you looked at that and have tried to address that?
We haven't actually, I didn't want to get into the plan in too much detail, but one of the, one of the definites that I see is that each team would have a parent in charge of checking in every player, where they would ask them those questions that we ask on our check-in to school, every practice and every game, and log that. And then the temperature checks would be something that we are definitely looking into. In a quick conversation with Dan, they've been doing it in football.
Yeah, we've been doing, anybody above 100.4, they go, like, they, they turn around and they, they go back and then, you know, they take their three days off, and then they come back after 72 hours of the last temperature or symptom. Temperature deaths are going to be 100% have to happen, especially because we're going to be indoors and because of the flu season.
And the second thing, you said they'd be wearing masks, but playing basketball, you can't wear a mask.
Again, that's another thing we've had discussion about, and I think that that's something that I would really like to make sure we nail down sort of as a group. What I see happening is anybody that's allowed in the gym needs to have a mask on. Play, while playing, I think it may be an issue, but I am not, I would like to find some other literature that sort of supports one argument or the other before I make a commitment. Many people have said it would be really hard to play on the court with a mask on, but I would like to see, I'd like to see something on that. So that's something that we still need to determine, and I think we could figure out as a group as well.
Well, I haven't seen a professional basketball player like the Lakers wearing that, so, you know.
Right.
And then the other thing would be that, how would you maintain social distancing in the gym, not with the players per se, but with parents, guardians, guests?
What I envision would be that same person that we have doing the check-in would also during the games be a person who we've sort of authorized to speak up to parents. As a, and then I'll let Dan go on this, as a Commissioner, I generally am at all three gyms, in and out, in and out all day, and would talk to them. We also have the leadership of HYA would, I think, would step up at any moment.
Well, I'm not, I'm not proposing that parents separate six feet apart, I'm just saying, from the next set of parents.
Oh, yeah.
I know, I understood.
No, I definitely would agree to that. Dan, what were we-
And actually, over the past couple weeks, I saw some pretty good examples, both in town and in baseball, we use cones for the kids, and then we had signs everywhere. And actually, I was at a football game this weekend, and actually, they had the stands, actually, caution tape off, so that when there was a section for a parent, they roll behind it, it was kind of like, you know, angled, so like, there was nobody within six feet apart, and we could just, they just take down caution tape. I thought it was a great idea, I took it and I. And honestly, I think limiting the amount of parents and family members, and especially non-family members attending the game, I think is going to be a crucial part of it. That's what we did for baseball. That's the recommendation for all sports for, from, from the state guidelines right now. And I think that that's something that we should look at, because the other thing you're going to have to do, we're probably going to have to put the kids into different roles, the kids on the bench, so because the bench is not that long. Football feels easy, you got 80 yards. Baseball feels easy, you got the whole fence, but basketball, we probably have to go two rows apart and then separate them sort of six feet apart.
Yeah, and if I could just ask you, next time you speak, to come up to the microphone so people can hear you at home. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Ginny?
Yes. First of all, I want to say if this board should have to say no, it's not because we don't believe in HYA, it's not because we don't believe in basketball, it's not because we believe that parents shouldn't have a chance to play basketball. We have to consider the safety and, uh, safety of this building and the students that go there five days a week. So I think we need to hear from Mr. Lassat-
Yes.
-because he is the one that holds the key to this.
Right.
Um, he had, he had expressed some concerns when we first talked about this back in August, so I think we need to hear from him and get an opinion from him as to how he feels this will work or if it wouldn't work.
Right.
And I will remind you that we are going into cold and flu season, and we all are nervous about that. And so I would rather, I would like to listen to his opinion as well.
Well, I, I asked him to make sure he would be here tonight-
Yes.
-and I, I just wanted to know if board members had any questions first, and then I had a question for Dave O'Connor, and Andrea, did you have a question? Okay. Dave, any decision, has any decision been made on middle school interscholastic basketball?
No, not yet. No, and, but as soon as I, and again, they're loose, they're, this time, they're meeting virtually, things are moving very slow, but as soon as I know something, I will contact Dr. Costa, and, but we're, everything's up in the air.
Did they, did they have schedules made yet?
I think they're foregoing the winter. I think they're, they're looking towards the spring is what they're looking at.
Really?
This is what, this is a conversation that the ADs, school ADs have been having, and I'm not privy to all those, so I, I'm, I'm not trying to tell a tale out of school. I think they're just trying to organize that, there are that many moving parts, like the situation between the games, how do you clean the seats, or, you know, make sure that you don't cross-contaminate and all the high-touch surfaces. I know Mr. Lassat loves high-touch services, so I just wanted to segue for him.
Well, you'd have to find out if there are other schools to play.
That's true. I have not heard yet.
Okay. Mr. Lassat, I see you out there. Good evening. So I, I think we all know what the pluses are. You know, it's good for kids, it's great for kids, it's great for the community, they're always well-run programs, et cetera, et cetera. What are the obstacles? Yeah.
Good evening. Hi. I think you people have touched on a lot of the obstacles. I think that one thing is we're challenged at Center School Gymnasium for air exchanges. When we, Mariah gets to the capital improvements program later on, we'll be talking about the original part of the Center School. We have adequate air ventilation at Marston and at Hampton Academy. The reason we're talking about this is because the, um, the viruses, droplets and aerosols that travel in the air, and we're providing, you know, air exchanges, and I know you don't want to hear about those anymore. Okay, so the HYA crew, team, moms, dads, really done an excellent job for our community, and I want to thank you and applaud you for the efforts and energy that you put into helping the kids at Hampton. It goes without saying, but I want to take that opportunity to thank them. We are always concerned with the health and safety and security of the building, how to make sure it's as safe as it can be for the A cohort and the B cohort when we're having instruction in the building. I think the decision has to be made very cautiously, in that once we open it to one, we'll be opening it to all. And that's something, we got to kind of really look at that seriously, because obviously Hampton rec programs are as important as HYA programs, as our senior programs, and other people that may want to use our buildings at the same time. I don't know how we can discriminate against one or the other, which I know that we would not. I know that we would be fair to everybody as we always have been. I do share the concerns with cleanliness of bathrooms as far as germs and, you know, as you know, now we have one ba, one toileting spot in each gang bathroom, because they were not designed for the six foot of social distancing and passing and going in, so that would be a tough thing on the restrooms. I worry about whether we're going to need bleachers in and bleachers out, and if everybody sits in the same spots, who would be responsible to clean between teams like on Saturdays. I think we have like, I didn't bring my paperwork with me, 94 events during the week when we have the gyms open. Not all HYA, that's with rec and the other teams and other building uses. We also did not have the community room, which has been in high demand with a couple of groups to have a place to meet as well. This is what I struggle with. I really don't have the manpower, woman power, people power, um, to execute all the cleaning that's necessary. I have asked for people to apply for part-time positions, which has been challenging to find people that want to work in a high-risk job for, you know, a fair wage. So that, we struggle with those demands. Although I know that the facilities team is willing to step up and do whatever the board asks us to. So I guess with that, I will volley the ball back to the school board unless there's other questions?
I have a question for you.
Yes.
If we agreed to go ahead with this, what would be the additional cost for that Saturday for a cleaning trip?
Okay, so that's kind of a trident of a question to answer.
We have an, we, you know what it takes to clean now.
Okay, so our building use policy is that if it benefits Hampton students, we do not charge for the use of our space. Boy scouts, girl scouts, HYA, rec department, seniors. A Saturday would probably take three to four hours. We have not been through it, so it's really hard to judge how much it would be, how long it would take. But if, once we start using the gyms, I don't know how many other activities we'll start using, because I would imagine the physical ed would want to start using it very regularly. I'm just, this is a fine clock we're tuning with lots of wheels that turn. And, you know, facilities may just be the lubricant on those wheels, but it really affects so many parts. I'm going with probably, what did we say the other day, $400?
I think so.
Yeah. If we were to charge for that extra, and that would just be the end of the day cleaning, prepare for the next day, not cleaning in between.
I wasn't getting to the charge piece. I wanted to know what the cost would be.
About $400.
You're saying $400.
About.
For two gyms.
Yep.
For two, 200, 200, at the end of a Saturday, let's just say.
Right.
And that's utilizing that new equipment we have?
Yeah, that would be utilizing new equipment, but keep in mind that I think surfaces have to be cleaned first.
Yeah.
Before the disinfectant is applied.
And you, how many weeks are you guys talking about?
For games, we were looking at, uh,
You probably want to step up here.
The nights of the 13th.
For games, we were looking at a six-week season. And I think HYA as a board, we have, we have talked about helping the school cover for that. And while I have always appreciated SAU 90's policy about not charging us to use the gyms, these are extraordinary times. And if, if we do need to make some contribution to that, I, I don't, I think the board would definitely talk about that.
So you're looking at six weeks?
Yeah.
Six weeks for games, a couple of weeks prior to that for practice.
So what are we looking at, 10, 10, 10 weeks total possibly? Eight to 10?
Weekend there and that type of thing, so.
Okay.
Eight weeks.
Wait. What do our guys work normally on a Saturday for cleaning?
Are we talking this school year or previous school years?
This school year, last Saturday, what, how many hours did they spend?
You know, I would have to look at their time cards, to be perfectly honest with you.
I'm not going to hold you down to the, to the dot, but I want to, because if young guys come in eight to noon or eight to one, if they're there till two, that means we've got to go till four, which means we got overtime.
Okay.
And we got four hours of overtime, so that may be more than the $400.
It has always been our policy to have a custodian in a building if their outside building users in here.
Right.
For everybody's safety.
Right.
This year, I, as far as looking at overtime on Saturdays for cleaning, for the disinfectant portion, we've got to keep in mind that it's been a very dry year. So we have benefited from not bringing in a lot of grass and a lot of mud on their feet as far as vacuuming and sweeping and mopping. So a lot of that time has been a benefit to do the disinfecting of the building. I would say they're putting about four hours in each building. Okay, there have been folks that have stayed late at night after the, if their 10 o'clock shift and stayed till one to get it done, so they didn't have to work on Saturday. I don't know if that answers your question. I know I'm creating more questions, I'm sure.
You are, because now I'm saying that the poor guy that came in and stays till one in the morning, he can't do that anymore, because you still have to come in on Saturday and clean for the basketball.
Well, that's probably wouldn't how it would work if we were just decide to, to go forward, having our buildings open on Saturday, because they wouldn't stay late, they would come back the next day.
But you're, you're looking at approximately eight to 10 weeks, if I use your numbers. The cost of approximately $3,200 to $4,000, using your $400. And you're also looking at kids, you know, that the program may be beneficial to them from an emotional standpoint. So I don't know how you cannot, you could use that to offset the cost factor, because.
It's an intangible.
It's an intangible.
Mm-hmm.
Well, Andrea, I'm going to call on you first, and then I have a question for Adam.
So was one of the options, Adam, was one of the options to have the, um, have the games like in after-school time on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and not use the gyms on the weekend?
That is not something that we had considered yet, and one of the reasons is when it comes to the practice slots. So most, half of the basketball they learn is during that practice time. We pretty much fill the gyms with our 26 or 27 hours worth of practice time. So if we were to shift that model, we would pretty much eliminate the practices. If we were to.
But if you started after, I, I've got actually two scenarios. If, if you were to play, and I don't know if this makes a difference in the extra cleaning or whatever the cost, but if you had, your teams have one practice a week for a couple of weeks on a Monday, a Tuesday, a Thursday, or a Friday, and then you had your games for six weeks and scheduled them for a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, or Friday, again, that would eliminate having to use the gyms on the Saturday, and I don't know if that, and Mr. Lassad could probably answer it, if that would make a difference. My other scenario that I had in my head was, is it, is it absolute that you would want to start right before the holidays? What about, I know some schools have flipped their fall and spring seasons. What about if you put it off and, and gave us time for, let's say, either COVID to settle down, or, I don't know. I mean, is that a possibility to put it off a little bit longer and maybe start? Because I don't know what the skiing season's going to be like. It doesn't sound like it's going to be very great. So you might want to start in January or February, or even have March Madness and have all your games in March. I mean, those are just some thoughts I had that might make it easier for cleaning purposes and/or money, and I don't know.
In terms of putting the season off, I think that we would be open to different ideas. I guess the issue, just like with everything else in the world, is when you pull one thread and other, a few other things, I know that other sports are starting.
We don't want to be the NFL.
Well, I just, yes, I, logistically, I think it would, it could be difficult, but it would be something to look at. Playing the, playing the games during the week, I do think as the person who does the schedule, that I, I think it would be pretty tight. Those five hours, six hours really, that we use on Saturday, to, to get that in during the week would be, would be tricky, but it would be something to look at if that becomes the stumbling block. I would just have to say that the staff at the schools, for all the years I've been doing HYA since I started coaching quite a few years ago now, have always been awesome. Every single time.
The work, we are. The work they do is fantastic, so I empathize with them.
If, if, if we do need to get somebody else in there to assist, but I know HYA was willing.
Can I ask you just a quick question?
Sure.
How many, I, I saw your sheet. How many kids were you thinking would be in the program?
Oh, when we take away the K through two.
126 kids taken out, so out of 450.
It was, we were estimating approximately 300 students.
So 300 kids?
Which is a pretty big chunk of the population in grades.
And those are all Hampton shit.
They are Hampton. We also do have Hampton Falls and North Hampton.
Okay, but.
We do, a few.
Yeah, you play at their buildings too, perhaps?
We play at Hampton Falls, except that this year they have problems with the ventilation system in their gym. North Hampton, um, we do not. We have not for a few years now.
So I'm guessing there's 600 parents out there that are probably quite supportive of this moving forward, swallows grandparents, et cetera, et cetera.
I hope so.
So I just want to touch base on the cost, Mr. Deluca. The, the schools in the community of Hampton have been so generous over the years for us, not, not charging us at all. If there, if there is a fee this year because of extraordinary times, it's, it is not an issue that, or it's not a, uh, it's an issue that we would deal with internally. So it's, I don't want to push, put it onto the board. If the number we come up with, 4,000, whatever it is, we would be able to enroll that into our registration fees, you know, for $3 a kid, whatever the number that came out to be. So we would, as HYA, we would certainly absorb the cost for that, so there would be no additional asks by the boards from a financial standpoint, because it is.
What do you have for scholarships for the child that can't afford the, uh?
Yep, fully, yep, completely, absolutely. Yep, there's a, there's a board, there's a checkmark right on the, a little, you know, on the registration page if you're, you know, where there's no questions asked. We probably give out eight to 10 per season, you know, no question. I mean, there's quite a few more. And in fact, one of the things we're looking at, sorry.
We, we give out quite a few more. We don't ask questions. People ask, we take care of it. And it's been that way. Part of the reason we're able to do that is the sponsors that we have. Over the years, we have, we have the backbone to get that done.
Sure.
We just, we have more than eight.
Okay, my apologies. They only let me have so much information.
Yeah.
Which is probably better. But yes, again, speaking to Mr. Lassad and the cost that came up, that would be something we would handle internally, so that wouldn't be, you know, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be an ask of the school board by any means.
So I think for you or for Adam, it sounds like Center School Gym is not going to be an option. So can you work around that?
Yeah, absolutely. So as Adam spoke earlier on his slide, as of right now, the Center School Gym was used for the 1, 2 in particular, and sometimes the 3, 4, but 3, 4 was over at the rim, that's not an option. So as of right now, we're taking that out of the equation. So we're, we're focusing on the 3, 4 and above, so it would be here as well as Marston, so. I completely understand, you know, the, the HVAC world as well, so I, I, I got it.
I'll be honest, that's, that is the first time that I had heard that about Center School, so we would have to make some adjustments. For people that are watching this at home, we would, we would have to figure that out, and we, we can, we will. It may be tricky for our third and fourth grade program to be able to run. But again, I haven't really gone through the numbers, the practice slots and everything else. I, I wasn't aware of that previously.
Ginny?
Les, I have a question.
Yes.
And it's to the, the people, our staff, okay? Our director, our principals, our whatever, all the people that work in our buildings. If anyone has a comment of why this shouldn't happen, of what they're afraid of happening, speak up now. Because I don't want to see this program get a yes, and then I hear, oh, we're just going to do this, or I'm going to do that, or this isn't going to work. I want to know now what the pros, what the cons are. If somebody is sitting there going, I'm adamantly opposed to this because, or something, speak up now. Because we need to be honest going forward with these things, because we're putting ourselves on the line as well. I mean, everybody that I know is nervous about what's going to happen in November, December, January. So if somebody's got a problem that works for us, please say it now, or say it to you in the near future.
Do you want me to say the, the number for people to call in?
They can call in, or they can just tell, talk to Dr. Costa or you.
Well, I, I'm going to say the number now, because it should be, and it's public, we're, we're moving in public comments, so. 857-444-0744, and then use the code 156034. So if we have any comments out there from the public, now would be a good time.
Les, can I just say that the PIN you're giving us from the last meeting, the PIN for this meeting would be 649427. We have been showing it on the screen to people watching.
649. 42.
649427.
Okay.
If you feel strongly, get in your car and come down.
Hit star four to raise their hand, and that will let us know that they have a question or comment they'd like to say, and then I can unmute them to let them take.
Okay, so you'll let me know if somebody calls in?
Yes, I'll let you know that someone raised their hand. So once again, star four, uh, for anybody out there listening that's on the phones, raises your hand, that lets me that you, lets me know that you have a question or comment, and then I'll let you know, Les, that we have someone with a hand raised.
Got it. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Greg. I, I guess another concern, but we'll deal with that at a later date, is this opens up a can of worms for some other requests.
Certainly the older citizens will be knocking on our door next, in November, so we'll be ready.
And I think the rec department has already knocked.
Renee is already knocking at the door.
And that's okay, I, you know, that's fine.
Okay, so I'm back.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor wanted to remind the board and the public that we are currently not using our gyms is not part of our, our program at all to use the gyms. That's why I brought up, if we were start to using, then the physical education classes would also be in there. One other thing, and this shouldn't, this shouldn't, just so you're aware, is that where the gyms are where we staged a lot of the excess furniture from the classrooms so that we could have the social distancing and that their rooms were, were spaced out appropriately. Just FYI.
Okay.
So do you have a place?
I'm going to back away slowly now.
Keep it useful aside, do you have places to put this furniture if they decide to use the gym? And what does it cost to have those guys move it? I mean, we might as well get at least.
I, I would like you to know that facilities will do whatever they can to make the programs run for the benefit of our students, their mental, physical, and all well-being.
And that is super. Do you have one somewhere in this building to throw out that furniture? Or if we don't, we don't keep?
Well, I, you know, it's interesting you bring this up because we're getting ready for a school inspection by the state. And they may have comments on that, but they know these are, the pandemic has created some very unusual situations. We would have to figure something out. Right now, we've scattered it so it worked best for the cohort programs that we're using in the building. Because keep in mind, a lot of classrooms are really just closed up as well, and they've got stuff in it. Depends on where we took the things from and we put them in rooms that weren't used. The gym is a place where we've moved a lot of things. I mean, you don't see calf tables, you don't see a lot of different things, but I just wanted to, to bring that up. The gym is not full, but there is quite a bit of stuff in it.
Yeah.
That's a good point to know.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a very challenging time.
But you do have the dining facilities, right, that are not used over the weekend for storage?
You can't be moving.
The.
Who's going to move it all?
Who's going to move it all, Frank? Not me.
Okay, so this is the dining, this is the dining area at the academy. As you can see, we have desks and chairs all set at six feet apart here now. Some are six and a half, some are seven. And we are only serving sixty kids per meal in here. The other buildings, well, the center school cafeteria, as you know, is, is small.
Well, we're, we're not using the center.
That's correct, and we're not using Hampton at the Marston School.
Right.
Yeah. Mary uses it for some of her distribution, but not much, it's a small area, nothing major. We did use the area when we were doing, when we were remote for technology to pick up and deliver and exchange Chromebooks. But I suppose if we're on remote, they won't be having basketball, but thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Can I ask Dr. Costa what her opinion is about this?
You know, I'm torn because I know it's exactly what kids need. I, I have to say, I commend you, Jason, for handling soccer the way you did. And to your credit, you did. You, you closed it down when you were concerned, and I was really pleased to see that. So they take it very seriously. So I have no doubt that you would continue to do, just as you've been doing all along, taking it seriously. And I think the families understand that, and they, we all appreciate that, right? So I'm impressed with what I've seen, and I've seen it firsthand. You know, it's, it's tricky because here we're saying one thing and yet we're doing something different. I think that's where it gets, for me, I feel a little conflicted, right? We're not doing gym classes. I'm worried that our numbers are going up in Hampton. So that's obviously of concern to me. At the same time, I, I know that, you know, the Academy of Pediatrics is very clear that really kids need this, right? They need to do this. So I've, I hate to say I've got one foot here and one foot here, but I do. And I, and I, I think what I see is how thoughtful you've been about that, and that to me is very encouraging. So I guess, you know, it's, it's about the kids. And so if we're going to do it for the kids, we, we try. If it doesn't work, we do a plan B. And I, and I think that, you know, I know that that's, that's not popular possibly. It's, it's not, some people are going to like it, some people are not going to like it. And I've been dealing with that since I've stepped into this new role, right? Every decision I make, I've got some people that are going to support me, and then I've got other people that are not in, in favor of my decision. But I, I really, it's always been about the kids for me, and I know it is about the kids for this board. Am I nervous? Absolutely. I am, I'm not going to lie, but I am also encouraged by what I see. And I'm very thankful for our open communication with all, with all of you. I think we've been very open and upfront right from the get-go. I know that will continue. I know that it creates, you know, more work for our custodians when we have a shortage of custodians. We have a shortage of substitutes. I worry about all of those things. But I think it gets down to the kids. So that's where I'm at.
Any other board members have any?
Thanks for asking.
Well, I, I think we all share that because I, I am stepping, my job is also to keep kids safe.
Yeah.
And I, we make them wear masks. We make them may, wear masks except when they're outside.
Yeah.
We, and they eat in their classrooms. We don't use the cafeteria. We don't use a lot of this building that the taxpayers paid a good amount of money for because we can't right now. So do we say it's okay to come to HHH and not, and participate in a sport where you don't wear a mask? And you may, you're going to try to social distance, but we can't guarantee that they're going to social distance. You're going to do the best you can, and I believe that. But, you know, it's hard with kids. So that's where I am. I don't know.
I feel very conflicted, but.
Well, I think we're trying to bring some normalcy to an abnormal situation. And I, I'm, I'm sort of with Lois, I'm kind of thinking about the kids. As I said, there's three hundred, four hundred parents out there that I, that I'm sure are supportive of a decision to move forward. Maybe there's some things we haven't thought of, and maybe we're not ready to make that decision tonight. But I'm sure you would like us to make that decision. What are the board's thoughts about making the decision tonight? I, I'll put it as a motion. I'll make a motion that we, that we move forward and allow HYA to run their season as Adam presented with a few tweaks. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, so if you don't want to make that decision tonight, vote it down, okay? And we can revisit it. Discussion, Ginny?
I just, okay, are we prepared to answer the floodgates that come with it? And how do we say, yes, we believe in HYA, yes, you're a great program, yes, we're doing it. The senior citizens come in and we say, you know, I'm not so sure, you know, you're older. Now, I don't know, this is what I'm nervous about.
It's, it's, it's great, and it's going to happen. And I would guess they would have to come to the board on November 10th, and I'm guessing they will.
I, I don't know.
But what we have in front of us tonight is a request.
Yeah.
This is the first group that's requested it, and it seems well thought out. We've heard from Keith and we've heard from the superintendent. Further discussion.
I just want to say that there's a less impactful scenario with covert with children, okay, than it is with adults.
Not recently, no. Not recently. Under eighteen is going up.
Right, right. But they're not being hospitalized and they're, they're dealing with it. I've been following it very closely because I have two granddaughters.
I've been following because I go preschool, you know, and preschoolers don't social distance. But.
I have two my granddaughters.
Pepper, any thoughts?
Well, just looking at the, the whole big picture, I, you know, if Keith has stuff, you know, in the gym, I, you know, that's part of it.
Sure.
To me, when I listen to Keith, that was definitely part of it. You know, where stuff is and where, I mean, they've done a great job to get us ready to come to school. And, you know, it, we want to keep that going the right way.
Hold on. Greg, is that a comment?
Yes, I do.
Hi.
Hi, I was just wondering, are they prepared for the kids taking their mouth guards out, touching the basketballs? How are they going to keep those basketballs clean?
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to turn that question over to the HYA folk. Hold on just a second, they're coming up to the microphones.
Do we know who it is?
Sanify themselves.
Hi, who was that that just asked the question?
All right, thank you.
It was, thank you.
So yeah, so we haven't put together our total guidelines yet for COVID for basketball. We have the state guidelines. Couple of things that will be happening. In between, every timeout, the ball will be sanitized, just like in every other scenario that they have in the state right now for basketball. Same thing, there will be hand sanitizer available at the entrances, on the benches, in the coach's bag, every time they come off the court and go back on the court. And that's a state guideline that we've been following for, for all HY sports, not just for this, because it's a task force guideline. But the ball will be cleaned in between each timeout or every time there's a whistle to limit the spread from that exact scenario.
How about mouth guards?
Mouth guards are same, mouth guards will be the same way. They'll, they'll, they'll wash their hands when they come off. Most kids, most kids, when you watch basketball, except for like the real little kids that unfortunately will be playing this year probably, the older kids literally only take it out when they, when they come out of the game because there's nowhere to put it. They can't just hang it on their helmet like other sports.
What about bluffs? The blue gloves, would you consider that to have the kids wear?
If a kid wanted to wear gloves, it's something we could definitely look at. There's other sports where kids have wore gloves. We just ran baseball the same way. There was, we cleaned the balls, and if we couldn't clean the balls, each team had a ball. But we did have kids during the baseball season wearing gloves, absolutely. It is an option.
I just thought that the closeness of, everybody's sharing the same, you know, trying to get the ball and this and that, and I just, you know, we have a box of them at home all the time.
Yep.
Hold on just a minute. Greg, were there more questions? Greg?
Nothing right now, Greg. I mean, I'm, Les, sorry.
Okay.
The only one.
All right. Well, I think I, we've given the public enough time to call in. It's been ten minutes or so, so I, I think you can close that, Greg, if you want.
Yeah, I, I'm muted, everybody back.
Okay, all right, thanks.
If you have a question further into the meeting, just to start forward, raise your hand, and I'll let you.
Okay, I think we're good, thank you.
So if we're discussing having two to three hundred kids on a Saturday, are we going to later on in the meeting suggest adding more days to children coming into school? What's that mean? Having in-school classes, more than two days a week? Are we going to discuss that later on?
I don't know if we're going to discuss.
Not all coming in at once.
No, I think she's talking about moving.
No, I'm talking about, we're moving to allow three hundred kids to use the gym on Saturdays. So I, yes.
Over a span of six hours, eight hours?
Over six hours. Are we going to add any more to school days for students in Hampton?
Are, are you talking about moving from the hybrid into?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
I thought we would probably be talking about that in November because the end of first trimester is.
December second.
Is December, and that would seem to be a logical time to make that decision.
Okay, so we're going to be discussing whether we're going into more, coming out of remote to go into something more in November?
We had, we had said that we would. We had said that we would.
Okay.
And I, I know there's some matrix, matrices out there that we can talk about as far as doing that.
Yep. In fact, it was in my newsletter this week that included the matrix, the variables on the matrix. You know, I, I think, you know, you, your timing is interesting, right, to bring that up as we're talking about this. The difference is basketball is a choice, right? It's a choice. If parents sign up to do basketball, this is a choice they're taking, and I'm assuming it's, you know, it's a parent choice. Obviously, as you think about our decision to go from, and the goal is always to go from where we are to full brick and mortar. The variables that are part of that, though, include all of those things that were identified in that matrix that we would have to think about. So it's not as linear to really compare it, if you know what I'm saying. But I.
But it's more, it's as many people want that as want basketball.
For sure.
For sure.
Or more.
Or more.
Exactly, exactly.
So, you know, I mean, I think that that's something that we've got to discuss in November then.
Right. So we're still on a motion that I made, I don't know who seconded it.
I did.
Frank seconded it. Further discussion on, this is the motion to allow HYA to move forward. Now, I will just, I'm just going to, Adam, if you were given permission to move forward and we found that there were some non-surmountable issues as far as storage in the gyms, et cetera, et cetera, you would understand that we couldn't make it happen.
I would, and I think, I think the community would understand as well. We realize, the board definitely, and I know the basketball group, we realize what a difficult decision this is. We don't, we're not taking this lightly. We know how hard this is. We know how hard for the principals, everybody involved with this. This, this is a big decision, we know that. In the event that circumstances change, I think we would, we would be willing to be visited, and I believe that the community would understand that. If we have to pull the plug even before it starts, that's what happens. But what we're trying to do is to be prepared with the possibility, with the hope that we can run this.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do COVID numbers impact the decision to go into basketball? Because, so right now, we have ten active cases, which is ten active more than we had last week. So we are, we're, we're hitting a, unfortunately, we're not going in the right direction, right? Which is of concern to me. So.
Yeah, but not active in Hampton, based on the state numbers as of today.
Yeah.
I think without a doubt, Lois, but I'll let the president speak to that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No, it's, it's a great question. I know we had trained, exchanged some communication about this, but this is exactly, this is the exact scenario of what happened this past weekend. So locally, there was some hearsay that some, there was a, a family, a couple of families that potentially could have been exposed that are involved in our program as well as addition, as additional programs. So that was, that was one on the local side. We have a safety director, Nate Deneo, that, former AMS office, I think a lot of, a lot of people on this board know Nate. He and I had a lot of discussion about it. And we also took partners with some, you know, regional, regional partners as well, like Exeter was having some issues. Exeter had shut down their, their rec programs for the weekend. We also have contacts in Hampshire Health and Human Services, so we partnered with them as well. So Nate, myself, and our commissioners, we were on the phone all last Thursday night thinking about that, okay, what can we do? So we decided to hit the pause button. There was, there was nothing directly brought to us from an HYA family that said, hey, we're having this issue. But we gathered all that additional data, and we made the right decision, sent the communication out, and we hit the pause button. Fortunately, all those situations seemed to be addressed kind of from a, a micro standpoint rather than a mass outbreak, which was great. So we, today, we, or yesterday, we opened up soccer again underneath our protocols because, again, we didn't have anybody infected. So there goes, it's the same thing with, with basketball and moving forward. If we see those numbers, and again, if the school board and the, the school and reaches out to us, say, Jason, we, or board, we don't feel comfortable with this, the first people say, neither do we. You know, the, the safety of our athletes, our families, and our volunteers are first and foremost. You know, we are, we have the same thought process and the same concerns that everybody is up on this board. But, you know, I want to share the example of what we went through this past weekend, how the decision was thoroughly thought through, and you know what, at the end of the day, we hit the pause button. People have a nice long Columbus Day weekend, great, they didn't have to go to a soccer field, no problem. We're, we're moving forward. And if, you know, and when we wrote the communication to the families, if the situation arises again, we're going to do the same thing, you know, until we have the right data, until we need to make sure that we keep everybody safe.
Thank you.
Further discussion, we do have a motion on the table. Okay, the motion is to allow HYA basketball to, to move forward. I'm sure there'll be some meetings with Keith and let this go forward if possible. All those in favor? Oppose?
The odd one.
That's okay, that's all right. So the motion passes four to one, and it doesn't make you the wicked witch of the West. We, because I know you're a sports fan, and I get it.
It's not a vote against kids or basketball. It's a vote that to keep people safe, everyone safe, and all our staff working, because, you know, we've asked an awful lot of our custodian staff lately.
But I would also add that the vote was made primarily for the kids and their well-being.
So, so, Adam, I guess you're all set to move forward. I would get, stay in contact with Keith, and, and I guess you understand center school is not available.
I do understand that. I just want to say thank you, and I am, I don't know how you've been making these decisions for the last six months. I, as, as a teacher in town for 20 years, I, I know the pressure that you're under. I appreciate you considering this for the kids, and we will do our best. All we're trying to do as volunteers is just to do our best for the kids. In the event that things come up, we will obviously be in communication. We'll try to make this run as smoothly as we possibly can in a safe way, and if we can't, then we won't. So, thank you very much.
And thank the three of you for all the hard work you do on behalf of kids. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
Can I just ask one quick question? Are the students, this is for Keith, actually, are the students going to, or the principals, are they going to start being allowed to use the gyms as the weather gets colder?
We only plan until September 1st trimester.
Okay, because the question could be asked, you know, if we're going to let HYA use the gym, why can't the kids use the gym for gym class?
Where were you five minutes ago?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I know, it just kind of like...
There's going to be things that come up for sure.
But it's, but it's, it's going to start on December 5th, right, after December 5th, right, okay.
Okay, reports.
Good question.
Ms. Lannan?
Thank you, guys.
Hello.
Hey.
In the essence of time, I'll try to be a little bit, a little quick, a little quicker than Jason over there. You have a chance to read my board report. As you know, we're still, we're still in the beginnings of the school year. I have to, again, each time I get up here, praise parents, staff, students for all they're doing to make this work. We are in a hybrid situation, and it's not the ideal situation, but we are moving forward, and I talk to Lois all the time about this. We're just, every day making, putting our best foot forward, and we're doing the best we can for these kids. It is not an ideal learning situation, we fully recognize that. But again, until a new decision is made, we are going to work with those parameters, and we're going to do the best job we can, and we continue to do that. So I'm so proud of the center school community for all they're doing, and remind them that if they have any questions, concerns, to reach out. Do you have any questions for me? We had a very successful open house virtually, and, and a great orientation at the beginning of the year, so we continue to hit those milestones, those benchmarks of what we need to do to communicate with parents. So we are doing that. Technology, as, as, kudos to technology, with our one-to-one devices, we're still managing to meet the demands with relatively few breakdowns. So again, many thanks to technology as well. Any questions?
I, I know the kids can acclimate very well to what's happening. How's the staff acclimating to the hybrid model? Substitute teachers?
Yep.
How's that going?
We have very good attendance, Frank, number one, so I want to praise the staff for their attendance. I think they recognize the need to do what's best for kids, so the, the attendance has been awesome. The staff has adjusted great to the schedule that they have. We're, we're having an opportunity to meet our demands on our Wednesday afternoons, to meet our meetings and, and do what we need to do and get our work done, because we're preparing for, not only in school, but we're also preparing for remote. So it's, like I said before, it's almost two schools in one, so the staff has really adjusted well.
Thank you.
I noticed in your report, you talked about your website, and I just wanted to, to, to say that that's something that all three schools and SAU 90 website, we got to keep those websites up to date.
It's important, because the parents are really looking for any way possible to get that communication. So I keep, I put my open house presentations up there, the teachers have that, there's links, my newsletters, everything is up there, because that's the first place that parents are going to go when they don't know where to go. And especially new entry into school, I constantly have enrollment changes and new folks, you know, I had two new kindergarten enrollments, so just today, Dr. Costa, two new kindergarten students are enrolling at center school, so they are coming, which is good, so, that's great. So thank you, Les.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
When do you anticipate kindergarten being able to come in?
They come in two days a week in their home...
How about four days a week?
When do I anticipate it?
When, would you like to see it, would you like to see it?
I do not have a board seat, Jenny, so I can't really make that decision unilaterally, so I would love all of my students to be in every day, but I don't get to make that decision.
When you have, what are the kindergarten parents feeling about the remote learning for them?
Luckily, I have my mask on, you can't see my face.
Well, no, I mean, Tim, I think we need to hear, you know, if there's something that they don't think it's all positive.
It's not all positive, obviously, it's, you know, those of us who've had five-year-olds and know the, the ideal way to learn as a five-year-old is not through the computer, and we recognize the stresses and demands, and I appreciate what parents are doing, but I don't want to come up here and grandstand to, to say that one grade is better than the other grades, that they, they deserve more than another. So I do believe that the primary age students would benefit greatly from being in school more than two days. And that's, that, I think that's common sense, I don't think I'm talking out of, out of turn there, right?
I don't think you are, and I...
No, there are some parents in, in all grades, and they have it, and my, my colleagues at the other schools that are frustrated with the online learning, but we're doing the best we can to support them.
As a person who's doing it for first grade in Seabrook, I can understand their frustration.
Yeah.
But it's just hard, and I, and I want parents to bear with us, but hopefully, we'll be able to get there, you know, sometime soon.
So the routines are continually, you know, in kindergarten, when you're coming in in person, it takes six weeks to build routines anyway. Couple that with the barriers of only two days now in school and three days at home, it is, for the younger students, it is difficult to build that sense of routines. We're still trying to fine tune the remote schedule to meet the needs of what the parents want. I have extremes at one end where parents want very limited amount of work at home during the, the remote days, and I have parents of kindergarteners that want a full day of just live instruction all day, they're just, you know, they just want that. So there are some highs and lows within the, within the normal day of, of hearing things at center school, but for the most part, things are going very, very well. You need to understand that, okay?
Thank you, Tim.
But I'm sure we'll be making some decisions, like Les said, in November and December as to where we want to move forward, okay? And I'll support all those decisions.
Kathleen? Okay, so what happened to Nathan?
Well, good evening. First of all, I'm delighted to be here in person and meet all of you. I'm Kathleen Hoppe, the assistant principal. Nathan is home with his new baby, so I am here in his stead, so it's particularly nice to be here for such a good reason. So you, I submitted the board report, I'm sure as you saw, and I echo Mr. Lannan's comments about just the inspiration that our students and our staff give us every day, and this, the Hampton community as a whole has just been so inspiring and just, you know, pulling together to really offer the best educational experience we can, knowing that there's so many challenges in today's day and age, but it's really an impressive effort by everyone. So that's something I, I would be remiss not to mention. That said, there's two things I want to highlight that's going on at Marston or that has gone at Marston. I think it's interesting that sometimes in dire times, you're forced to brainstorm, and sometimes those ideas are even better than what you thought of before. For instance, we had a virtual curriculum night, we all did, last Tuesday, and we had a schedule with the Times and Google Meets, and so parents, for instance, came out at 5:30 for a Q and A session with myself and some staff, and then they were able to jump on to an integrated arts meeting and to their classroom through the convenience of their own home in their pajamas while their kids were there and they were eating dinner. So while it was, of course, not the best circumstance, I think it might have worked really well, and we had a really great turnout. So that was something that was really exciting to see many of our parents from the screen. The second thing I wanted to highlight was our mentor groups are off and running, and we kind of chose to tackle this initiative just a little bit differently. We have used almost all of our certified staff, I think 36 people, and divided our student population into multi-age groups of about six to nine students. So we are able to connect our students with a different adult other than their classroom teacher, so maybe someone brand new, maybe someone who taught, maybe if the fifth grader, a, a third grade teacher, or, you know, someone who taught their siblings, and let them kind of make a connection with that person. And then the fifth graders get to model for their third graders, and the third graders get to see how the fifth graders, what they know. So it's kind of a cool connection that replicates maybe some of the informal, day-to-day life of, of regular brick and mortar schooling that we're excited to offer to our parents and to our students. We kind of got to a slow start, we started during the massive power outage a few Wednesdays ago, so that didn't work out so well, but it's been going much better since then, and I'm excited to see where it goes. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback so far.
I've heard from Marston students in our neighborhood, that's like the best thing they do all week is the mentoring, the best thing they do. All the Marston students, we've got like four or five, including one of our own, and they all say the mentor group, since it started, is the absolute highlight of their week. Kudos.
The teachers love it, too, to see old, old students or siblings, it's really exciting for them, too.
Any other questions for Kathleen?
No, but it sounds exciting. Sounds wonderful.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connor?
Good evening. How are you? October, boy, that first month of school went pretty quickly, didn't it? And again, we're, we're trying to do what we normally do, we're trying to establish routines and schedules and things like that, and, and from the middle school standpoint, I think the kids are doing great, but much like my colleagues have echoed, I have to give the parents and the kids and the staff all the credit for this, because, you know what, they're, they're socially distancing in the building. We're eating lunch out on the back field on, on blankets. We've been very fortunate, we, this was the first rain day we've had since we started school, and, and we moved right inside pretty seamlessly. And, and again, we're teaching and we're learning, so Sept- October, September was get used to it, and so October, we have some assessments we're working on. All our students participate in a STAR assessment, which is a universal screening, we do one in math and in reading, about a 30-question test, it takes about 45 minutes, but it gives us a baseline of, of where kids are and how we can help them. Later on this month, our students will participate in an interim assessment that the state is offering. It's called SAS, Student, the standardized assessment for the state assessment system. And that's, again, a very shortened version of, of what the state usually sends us. It's two sections, or about 30 questions, or about 45 minutes each. So we'll participate in that in school, and we actually have some, we're going to give that test remotely as well. The state is helping us do that, and again, much like my colleagues, the, the technology, you know, again, we, we couldn't live without it. We did have that Wednesday, two weeks ago, where we had that front come through at about nine o'clock in the morning and, and knocked everybody's internet down for anywhere from five minutes to a couple hours, but honestly, that schedule is going well as well. Upcoming month here, we, we're, again, we didn't go to environmental camp, that's usually the way we get to know our sixth graders, we get to take them away for a week and bond, and I, I know that some of you up here have had that experience, so it's, we're, we're really focused on trying to get to know our sixth graders, because we're not, we're not away with them yet. And we'll, we'll celebrate red ribbon week at the end, at the end of the month. That is the national recognition of, of living healthy, making good choices. We do that, we, we work on that every day, but again, it's, it's an unusual time, so we're, we're trying to be creative. Tomorrow evening, we're going to host our curriculum night tomorrow afternoon, and Mrs. Hughes and I, and Mrs. Brand, the guidance counselors, and, and Ms. Buchen, our, our social worker, will start it off, or we'll, we'll introduce ourselves to families, so people get to recognize names and faces. And again, the teams have sent out links, and they're going to do, they're going to do presentations, and we'll, we'll host a question and answer session as well tomorrow. That was a busy month.
Anybody have any questions for Dave?
I guess on, on a couple of these, it says PTA monthly meeting...
Yeah, actually, you know what, actually, that, that was a typo. They used to have it on the Tuesday, and then they moved to a Wednesday, then they switched...
So that's next Wednesday?
It is next Wednesday.
Okay, all right, just want to make that clarification. And how soon do you anticipate that the parent portal will be open?
Yeah, we had an update today, so we, we created our schedule last, last April, and then we decided on July 28th to go to a different model. And I think Tim said, he feels like a principal of three schools. You have your kids who are in the building, you have your kids who are hybrid on the days they're not here, and then the completely remote kids. So we had to create three schedules in about six weeks. We're in a process that usually takes six months. So the portal, the classes are in there, the teachers are entering grades this week, but before I open it for the parents, I really want to make sure that that works and that they can, they can access that, that information. So I look, I look to inform them tomorrow night on the status of Power School. But the teachers are communicating, Google sends out reminders, we do a Friday afternoon reminder to, to families, and, and again, I wish it was up, but it is what it is, I can't, I can't, Cheryl Solari is our data person, so she's down to just holes in, in the schedule where it was a STEAM class or an inter, integrated arts class, but for the most part, the schedule is good, it's just making sure that teachers have the right classes. Because remember, we have to create twice as many classes for teachers. If you usually taught four, now you're teaching eight, and if you usually taught eight, now you're teaching 16. So it's, is quite a bit of work involved in doing that. And, and I've been communicating with parents every week that as soon as we get there, but I always encourage parents, please reach out to your, your child's teacher, whether it's a phone call or an email or a chat. We actually, we actually did, we do chats, video chats, and we'll be glad to hold a parent meeting anytime they want.
I'd also like to give a shout out to all the parents who have to do those screenings, especially the ones before 7:00 AM. I can only imagine how difficult it is.
Yeah, and again, I'd like to say thank you.
And if you forget sometimes, it's okay, they'll, they'll not warn you, they will gently remind you, but it's hard.
First, the first three weeks, we were, we had 30 to 40 students a day that weren't completing it. We're down, we're down in the teens now to twenties. And again, it's, I realize how difficult it is in the morning, because we need it by 7:00, because they arrive at, at 7:20, but we're doing much better.
Yeah, that's why I gave a shout out to the parents for doing that.
We're, we're doing our best.
It's not easy.
It's not perfect.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dave?
Steve, if you're a parent of an average student, that's, no one's average, I realize that, but how much time do they have to devote to their child in, in the remote learning?
I think when you get to the middle school level, again, and generally speaking, I mean, some kids, you know, they need, they need someone to help them get, get it started, and they need someone to get it in the middle, and they didn't have someone to help them finish it. So I don't think that's age, age dependent, but middle schoolers, they can acclimate, acclimate a little bit more than I would say than, than your elementary kids, the younger, the younger kids are. I would think they probably need a lot of support, yeah.
And your, and your parent, your teachers like notify them if they've gone like a week and are missing?
They won't, they won't get that far, no.
Get that far?
No. It's actually, we try to do communication once a week. And so, because in middle school or anything, if you let things go for two weeks, it's too late. It's a challenge.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Doctor, I don't know, should I say Dr. Silver Napkin? Or should I say Dr. Lois Two?
I'll be Dr. Lois Two, that's fine. Good evening, how is everyone tonight? I will keep it short. But I do want to say, I want to thank the administrative team for putting up with my absences and the special education staff for their amazing work getting through our comp ed meetings in September. It was, we did it all. We do have some students receiving compensatory education. And just to let you know, the governor did say that they will be trying to fund some of this. So I'm keeping a little spreadsheet. When they ask for that data, I can tell them how much it is costing us. And I'll let you know if they come through with the funds. Mariah will smile. I also want to highlight the preschool development grant, just to let the board know that you did apply for this in conjunction with SAU 21 over the summer. And we, I guess, were the only entity that applied, and we did get it from the state. So it's, we're working on expanding the leadership team right now. It is a joint effort. And, you know, you can see in the report that they're, we're going to try to conduct an assessment to determine the needs of our families in the catchment area for preschool, address any gaps. And we're really trying to make daycare affordable and high-quality for that age group. So we'll, I'll let you know where that goes. And I gave you some numbers. I compared the October 1 count from last year to the October 1 count of this year. So you can see all kinds of numbers on there. If you want anything different, let me know. And thank you for your time.
Any questions? Glitch, technology glitch.
My question is, why did your numbers change dramatically by 121 students from?
Are you looking at the district total?
Yeah.
So I put that down there just as a, that's on your regular enrollment report from the superintendent. That's just so you can compare for the percentages of how many special ed students we have to compare to the district. So you, that's the October 1 count for the total district in Hampton. Last October 1 was 1,077, and now it is down to 956. Lois has an answer for that.
Do you want me to answer that? So we were looking at that because obviously enrollment was due on October 1st. And I have to talk to myself. And really, the SAU had an extensive conversation, it warranted a conversation, obviously, with the leadership team. And just so you know, our eighth grade team, eighth graders that went up to Hampton Academy was quite large. In fact, the kindergarten was 50 less than those that left. So you know what I'm saying? So we had 50 less students coming in to kindergarten than the eighth grade we sent out. So you had a delta of 50 lost right away. On top of that, we did lose a number of students to homeschool, to private school. And otherwise, we are, we have not lost any kids. That was one of the conversations that I had with all the principals to ensure that we could account for all of the kids. But we do have, we have about 24 students that went to Sacred Heart. So there you're up to 75. And then we do have about 25 kids that are being homeschooled. There's your 100. And then probably about a couple per grade that have either moved out or are doing something different or going to private school. So that's really where it is. I think it really speaks to the impact that COVID-19 is having on our district. We are not alone. This is a state issue, as many students left their home districts to go to private school, to go to ELAC, to do other things. It's just unfortunately, the nature of the beast with COVID-19.
And I'm sure this will come up maybe even Thursday in our budget discussions.
And you can see the details of all those numbers in the superintendent's enrollment report. But the total that's highlighted, the 164 to the 153, that's the change in special education, identified special education students from last year to this year.
Question on the 24 that moved over to Sacred Heart, do they need to have?
Special ed?
Special ed that we need to provide.
Right now, well, you can see on the chart, there's seven students that are at Sacred Heart that require special education. So it's pretty much, there were nine last October, now there's seven. We have probably one more in the, I think, one of the children. Not many, let me say that. Not many of the students of those that moved to Sacred Heart require special education.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ginny?
Your friendship students for preschool, you didn't take any new ones this year?
We did not take any new ones due to COVID. So we just kept the ones that we, a couple of the four-year-olds, I think they were four, yeah.
And Head Start's not there anymore either, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lim Paris? There he is.
I'm a man of many duties tonight. So I first want to thank my team because, as you can imagine, in an environment where we've tripled the amount of technology, that's tripled the amount of work from my staff. So they've really stepped up, and they've been great in meeting the needs. There's going to be glitches. As we see now, the battery has died in the middle of our talk tonight, so I was swapping that out. But things are going great otherwise. You know, people are rolling with the punches. They're helping us along, is communicating with the team often about what they need help on and need fixed. And we always remind them that some of the things are problems just associated with their network at home. So always keep that in mind is you have to have communication with your internet service provider, see how your download speed and upload speed is. Remember to clear the cache of your device. We have instructions on our saun90help.org website on how to do some of those things to help the parents just in some of these things that are beyond our control. Or we can help you if you call us and talk us through it. But any questions? You have my board report, so.
I think we've talked about this before, but I want to bring it up again. So kids who are in school take their laptops home at night. And the kids that are out of school, they have their laptops at home. So I would guess that there wouldn't be any snow days this year.
Well, keep in mind that.
No, I mean, there may be days that everybody stays home, but they could still do work.
As long as they have electricity and internet.
Oh, I know that, yeah.
Right, but yes.
And they know ahead of time, they have to know what to do.
So if we had an inclination that it's going to snow tomorrow, bring home, everybody bring home your device tonight to be safe. And assuming the power doesn't go out and the internet isn't dead, then yes, you could still hold classes normal as long as everybody was aware of that possibility.
Right. And Pepper, I think said, well, the teachers wouldn't be able to come to school to get their things. But they could be. So that may be worth some discussions with you and the principals and whatever so that we don't have to have, I mean, they can stay home, the buses don't run, the kids don't come to school, Mary doesn't feed them, but it doesn't cost us a day of instruction.
Yeah, which we've had some of those preliminary discussions about that possibility. I think it's just more of a finalized plan that we'll work on, I'm sure, as a team, to say if this happens, this is what we do. And I mean, you may have the plan where we say we're going to have a snow day where you work from home, everybody, and all of a sudden, there's no power, no internet.
Yeah, well, I know.
We'll change that. So we'll have to have something in place that, but.
Any other questions for Greg?
I just want to say congratulations on being the president-elect for, I don't know what, you'll have to explain what you are president-elect for.
So New Hampshire CTO is a branch of COSIN, which is a national branch of technology officers across the country. So the New Hampshire branch, we meet on a monthly basis to discuss technology issues in all of our districts, what we've learned, we learn from each other. So the outgoing president is the technology director in Derry, my hometown. And there's another president coming in. So I'm filling in for next year. So I'm kind of learning the ropes now, working under their wing that next year I'll be the president of the New Hampshire CTO branch of COSIN.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Any other questions for Greg? Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent, Dr. Costa.
Thank you. Just a couple of donations from Hannaford for Center School, permission to accept. There are four checks, two for $1,000, one for $1,092, and one for $1,842. That's $1,842. Let me say those again. Two for $1,000, one for $1,092, and one for $1,842. That's from Hannaford Helps to the Center School.
That's wonderful.
Beautiful, generous donation.
We get a motion to accept.
Motion.
Move Pepper, Second Frank. All those in favor? Unanimous?
Yay.
Thank you. So you'll notice under the first goal, which is really around our communication goal, we talk a little bit about the Connors Climb Suicide Prevention Training, which was on the Friday. And I know that we had a conversation with the Professional Development Committee regarding those Friday in-service days. So we met and we are making a recommendation, the PD committee is making a recommendation, to move all of the Friday early release days to Wednesday. This would impact, this would impact Friday, October 23rd, Friday, March 12th, and Friday, May 14th. We'd like to move those to the Wednesdays previous.
Does anybody have any objection? I don't think you need a motion from the board.
Okay, just want to let you know that we'd like to do that. So, yeah, just to keep it consistent with those Wednesdays. And it makes it just easier, I think, for families. And so that will be helpful. The second thing is, is that we have a draft of the 2021-2022 calendar for your review. We've obviously collaborated with CE and SAU 21 about this proposed calendar. So you can take a look at that.
Want us to act on that?
Where is it? If you're ready to. It should be in your packet.
Folks ready for that? We don't have to do it tonight. We can do it next meeting if you want.
I'd prefer to wait till next meeting so we have a little chance to look it over better.
Okay.
It's on page, they're on page 20 and 21, just to take a look at that. And then obviously, working with our social worker, Emily Buckin, on 68 Hours of Hunger, who's doing a great job, meeting families, working with community agencies and getting acclimated, and really have enjoyed helping her, assisting her, as I know everyone else has. So a big thanks to everyone there. The school psychologists are working with the school counselors regarding our support groups for staff, just as another way to have conversations about what they might be feeling, what they might be dealing with. I think you've heard quite a bit tonight that there's a lot on everyone's plates. So giving our staff another opportunity to have some discussions and conversations. So a special thanks to Dr. Les Masterman and our school psychologist, Stacy Picard, in taking the lead on that work. So we appreciate them as they're set up some support groups for everybody, just to ensure that people feel that they have a venue for conversation and support. And then you see that, and you've heard about the schools all participating in those baseline assessments through IREDDI or through the STAR assessment. So we can get a good handle on where students are as the beginning of the year, as a pre-test. It's kind of just a baseline assessment. This helps us to inform instruction, inform groupings, help with differentiating, and ensuring that every student gets what he or she needs. I've had the opportunity to do some walkthroughs at Center, Hampton Academy, and Marston. And I have to say, without a doubt, the teachers are working tremendously hard each and every day, providing that small group support, providing the individualized instruction, the personalization and differentiation. So really proud of them. And we will have an opportunity to participate in those interim benchmark assessments as part of the New Hampshire State Assessment System. And that'll be for grades four through eight. So we'll get another point of data with that as well. So again, just to see where our students are, just to develop some plans for interventions, looking at patterns and trends. We, continuing our work with demonstrated success this year, looking at the interim and module support programs in terms of how we can look at those to support curriculum work. And then finally, leadership team is working with New Hampshire, listens on equity and diversity. Our next session is October 28th, which is a Wednesday. We meet at 1 o'clock with that group, which is out of the Carcy Institute in UNH. So a great resource that we have. And I guess, you know, our final goal, which is really the probably the most important goal of all, is obviously our desire to move from our remote learning structures back to brick-and-mortar learning. That's important to us. That's not lost on any of us. You have to know that this is challenging for everyone. We know it's challenging for families. We know it's challenging for students. And it certainly is challenging for staff. I think you heard the principals say tonight, and the assistant principal, that they are really conducting what feels like three schools as we, as they juggle hybrid with remote, with in-person learning. It is, it is very challenging. You can be sure that I am constantly having conversations with people at a state level, whether that be our commissioner, or it be the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, and our nurses as we, as we work through this pandemic. It's not lost on me. I know that superintendents around the state are using a matrix, which is used to determine where we move. And I know that we are always looking at the COVID numbers, not only in the state, but really specifically looking at Hampton COVID numbers. We also have to recognize that the staffing is a piece of all of that. So looking at the staffing, and looking at the students, and looking at what it takes to keep schools open, and also being cognizant of what those numbers look like. We are in constant communication in terms of, I send out a weekly letter to families on Fridays to let them know that I am monitoring this. I am in conversations with superintendents in the southeastern part of our state, but also with, obviously, SAU 21, I'm Dr. Bill Lupini. We are in conversation. So it's not lost on me. I know that we have challenging decisions ahead of us with rising COVID numbers, which is of concern to us. We encourage families to please consider getting the flu shot this season. October is the month for the flu shot. We encourage everybody to do that if they are able to do so. And to please, please, we know the screeners in the morning are one more thing for families to do. But again, it's one of the ways we can ensure the safety of everyone in trying to keep our schools open. So please, please, and thank you for doing that. You know, it's been challenging work, but it's been rewarding work. And I have to just say, everyone has been exceptional in the middle of all of this. So a big thank you to everyone for their support and cooperation. And we know we've got some challenging months ahead of us as we enter cold and flu season. Please be mindful of what you do on the weekends. Please be mindful of wearing masks, social distancing, and washing your hands. All of these things are important to us staying open and being able to do our in-person learning, which we hugely value.
My suggestion, and I'd take feedback from the board, is that we streamline next month's meeting and allow plenty of time to discuss moving or not moving to full inclusion. And the principals can prepare their thoughts, and superintendent can prepare her thoughts. And because if we're going to move in that direction, we would have to make probably that decision next month. So is that fair? We'll give ourselves plenty of time for that discussion. Frank?
I would suggest that if you want to do that, then we remove some of the items that are redundant in the.
I'll work with Lois, and we'll streamline it. But I just wanted to alert principals and whatever. If we can go in that direction, we said we would revisit it, we will. If we can't, well, we can't. Thank you. Any other questions for Lois? Ginny?
Yeah, Lois, could you remind, it's really hard when you're home and you're doing your learning remotely to not make comments that you might make if you weren't in a classroom? And we need, if we want, please remember that anything that you say in the background is picked up. Because I know someone was hurt this week because of a comment, somebody got, it got out that someone had said. So just be careful with what you say because it is picked up.
Absolutely. You know, I think, and we never know who's listening on the other end of that computer screen. I think it's really a great lesson in digital citizenship. We talk about this all the time in our technology classes. I know that LJ Dutton, Amber Levine, and Sue McNichols, and all of the staff emphasize this all the time in that, you know, what is the, what is the proper conduct and decorum for online learning? And it's the same as being here in school, right? It's our same expectations and to be respectful, to be safe, responsible, and cooperative citizens. And remember that you have signed a user agreement with. cooperative citizens, and remember that you have signed a, a user agreement with your device. So please remember that you are using a school-issue device, and that the, what you signed is in, in effect. So please keep that in mind, and remember, we, we always, we always have to be respectful and mindful of, of who may be listening. So words do matter. We know that. Thanks. It's a great reminder.
I, I think I'd like to just also say one more thing to everyone in the public. It's really hard if you've got someone that has COVID, and it's really hard to tell people or to let people know, but it's really important that you try to get over being embarrassed or anything like that. It's nothing to be embarrassed about. It needs, we need to know, so that we can keep the kids safe and keep the families safe. So please, don't, don't be afraid if, if something happens in a family or scenario, and, and you need to let people know, so we can all work together to keep everybody safe.
Right. I guess we, we balance the need to know with our HIPAA, right?
Right.
Our HIPAA regulations. I think that, you know, families are, are going to tell the right people, and we can do what we need to do to keep people safe. And I, I hope that people would trust us enough to contact the nurses and to contact the right people. I know that Department of Health and Human Services does an excellent job with contact tracing. It's a huge jobs to do, but they are, they're great at getting back to us. And I know the nurses have reached out to them on numerous occasions, just with questions we have. So we are here to be a resource to every family in Hampton, and we will, will be that resource, that advocate for you. So if you have a question, reach out to us. We'll get the answers that you need, and, and again, balancing the right to know with your privacy. So we, we respect that.
Okay. Thank you. Mariah, finances.
Hi.
Page 22.
I'm going to start this evening with giving you some information that I will be giving to the Budget Committee next Tuesday at 7:00. If I, just in case you tune into, to our meetings and not the Budget Committee, I'd give you a little information on where we landed last year for our summary for fiscal year 1920. Our operating budget, we ended with $161,655. Last year, if we remember correctly, right around December, we did a freeze of the budget because we had some concerns about the special ed expenses and some of our expenses that we had, where we're getting really close the budget. So at that time, we also took out some trust funds. So we utilized $75,000, $7,500, $75,000 of the trust fund we utilized for special ed that we, that we have set aside in our, our Special Education Trust Fund. So we utilized that money. We had excess revenues returned of $37,458, and we, at the end of the year, had Hampton Academy investment interest returned of $217,842. So with those extra revenues and the budget, operating budget ending, we have a fund balance to offset taxes this year for $491,955. Unfortunately, COVID helped us in 1920, because if we did not have the savings from March to June that we had, we would have been very, very, very close. And also, with the Hampton Academy interest, I did not expect it was this year that it was coming. I thought it was last year, the way that we had, but it was put in my fund balance and not in the revenues. And when Nate and I switched positions, I didn't know he had already put it in the fund balance and not in the revenues. So that showed up this year when I was doing my DOE 25. So with those two, that big-ticket item, and having a savings that we didn't expect at the end of last year gave us a fund balance. So I'm pretty happy with what we get to give back to the taxpayers this year. It will help some of the situations that I'm sure they're going through with COVID-19. So with that said, our Special Education Trust Fund is down. I don't think that we're probably going to try to refill it this year. I don't think it's the best time to try to refill that. So, but we're still doing go. We still have enough money if we need to touch that fund. So that was for last year. I'm going to go a little bit more in detail with that at the Budget Committee next Tuesday, if you're interested and you want to check that out. But I think that's good news.
Definitely.
And then, this year's New Hampshire Retirement, as I told you last meeting, the, the rates went up. I gave you this time, the actual backup for that. Teacher rates went up 3.22%, and employee rates went up 2.89%. I also got today, in, for information in the email, the rates for our health insurance. They went up 11.5%. I have not got any backup or any information regards to that as of yet, so I will be looking into that. But I just got that information today. I still, I'm trying to get Primex's information to see where unemployment is. So we will be going through that budget, obviously. On the 22nd, I'll have all that information for you. And for the budget meeting for Thursday, we were going to discuss the May freeze, the budget for this year, going over COVID expenses. I put in your packet the letter from FEMA in regards to, we will not be receiving any funds for any of the items that they had originally promised us. We actually put in a report from June to September for about $15,000, and from March to June, that was about 24, and way in advance when we were supposed to. And then they came back and said, nope, FEMA is not giving out funds for the items that we originally thought we could claim. So with that is what we'll be discussing on Thursday, where we're at with our expenses for COVID, where we will be going with them, if we stay in brick, if we go in full-time, if we go in part-time, the expenses that we occur, the cleaning expenses and the PPEs that we will do every month, if we stay in the school, what they'll cost. We'll go through that. And then the savings that we have this trimester, and deciding if we're going to still have those savings next trimester, depending on what we do. So I will pull all that together for Thursday, and then I will have your books done, hopefully by the following Monday, for the budget that we'll go over on the 22nd.
Did I hear you say that, was that the guaranteed maximum that was 11% on the health?
Yes, guaranteed maximum, 11.5%.
Won't exceed that.
It won't exceed the 11.5%.
But it could, it could go underneath that.
But it could go underneath. Last year, it went up 7.2%. That was the guaranteed max, and that's actually where it landed.
Yeah, okay.
We are getting a refund back from two years ago, that, and they finally came up with numbers on that, but I don't have the exact number yet, what the, what the school will get, and what the employees will get. So I will be going through that.
We will be putting checks back.
Yes, we will, we, they give me a breakdown of who had what insurance for that time period, and we, we put it through payroll. Yep.
My, my, my second question, and I, and I see that there was a loss of $82,000.
Yes, for food service. We had gone over that.
Right.
Yep.
And, and where did we?
That came, that always, when there's a loss, we take it out of our general fund.
General fund.
Yep. So our general fund, even with that, once that was taken out, is what we had left was $161,000.
$161,000, okay. That's, that was my question.
Yep.
What, what created that $82,000?
So that, so think about it. We had no revenues from March to June. We were paying all our employees their average hours. We kept them.
Creating food.
And we had, we were still creating expenses of food because we were, we're paying everybody. We did get some funds back from the, from the state. It was the, you know, free meals.
Mary, did you want to speak? Since you've been so patient.
Yeah, I mean, $82,000 was, we paid our employees, we were still feeding kids all summer. Food costs, not a lot, but we still were buying food.
Containers that we normally even have to buy.
Containers, because everything has to be in a container, in a bag, and separate, and out the door. So, you know, these things that we didn't expect.
So do you have an idea of how we're doing this year?
So I'm excited to say, because the first week of school, we were feeding about 75 kids a day, when they're in school, 75. Now we're up to almost 300.
Wow, dang.
Pickup on Monday and Wednesday, we're doing about 140 to-go meals for the remote kids at home. The parents, about 140 on Monday and 140 on Wednesday. So they're coming and picking up their meals for the remotes. And we also are delivering to seven families. So my Michelle gets in her car, goes around town, and drops off, because we have seven families, they just can't pick up, and they really need meals. And we are happy to do it. I do want to just say, parents out there, if you're listening, please, USDA is reimbursing us for every breakfast, every lunch that we give our students, and that is great for the school. We get reimbursed the money from the USDA until December 31st, so it's free to you, free, free breakfast, free lunch, have your students eat with us, still healthy, nutritious, great meals, like we always have been, and they're free. So take advantage of this opportunity. You don't have to cook, you don't have to go buy groceries, you don't have to do anything. We'll do the breakfast and lunch for you, so just if you please, it helps out the school tremendous amount. I think that's it, unless you have...
Any questions for Mary?
Something else you want me to talk about?
Although you, you'd be willing to take donations if people wanted to.
Absolutely, if you still want to...
Set aside funds?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Ginny?
So what is the profit or loss in the first, have you done it yet, Mariah?
So, we have not received revenues as of yet.
Okay, this is stage one.
Right.
Yes, correct. We, you have, they have to, we have the report...
We have to have the application approved.
The beginning of the year, and then, yeah. So I should definitely have something for you for next.
Yeah.
But I did do your expenses, that's in there, if you wanted to look at that. There was just no revenue, so there's no estimate. So I still unsure exactly where we were for the summer, until we get that. And that should be, I should, we should get that.
I can have that number, yeah.
We should get that, probably, we just started putting, getting them approved through the state, so we should have that by next, next meeting.
Yeah, I could even have it to you by Friday. I do have the numbers at work. We didn't do great, but we did help 25 families a day, 25 to 30. So if we're helping one family, you know, so I, I...
Yeah.
I hope we broke even, but we did have families in need that came every day and picked up 25 meals a day.
I mean, when every food bank is going, when every, you know, food pantry's going and feeding, you know that there are families out there that need it, so...
Right. So we were there, and they, it was a need, and it was, it was great.
So Mary's putting it on Facebook, right? Is it Facebook?
We put it on Facebook. We put it on my, my webpage, Dr. Costa, put it on her Sunday, you know, she mentioned that also. So yeah, we're putting it out there.
Yeah, so check out, check out the menus.
There's no shame in filling out...
No guilt.
Check out the menus!
And fill out the form, you know.
Check out the forms.
I, I, I mean, a little quick story, but my husband was out of work 15 years ago. I had three little ones in school, and I'm like, oh my gosh. And Nancy Stiles says, fill out the form, filled out the form, my kids got free lunch. And I only needed it for three months, but what a big financial help that was to me to feed three kids breakfast and lunch for three months. So please fill it out, whatever financial or whatever you need.
Exactly.
Okay? All right.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night, Mary.
Are you good?
Yeah, so I think we're all good. So we're good for Thursday. We'll work on this year's budget and discuss that, and then I'll have the books ready for you for the following week, and then we'll go through the new budget.
I, I thought that this was, I don't know, I was pretty upset by this memo or whatever you received from the Department of Education, that FEMA...
Oh, yes, did you, that was, we...
Can I just read one quick section, because this is just something people should hear? FEMA confirmed on Friday, September 11th, that the operation of schools, even with changes necessitated by the COVID-19 environment, is not an emergency protective measure eligible for financial assistance under the Public Assistance Category B. Because the education of children is not an immediate action necessary to protect public health, life, and safety.
Yeah, that was after they promised everybody they were going to pay.
And so I just was flabbergasted by that, that we can't get any help for PPE, cloth coverings, disinfecting, physical barriers, temperature scanning. It's just mind-boggling.
But we have to get them all back into school.
Yeah, but we've got to get everybody back in school.
You have to get them all back to school, and you have to get all the businesses back in operation, but they may not get the funds that they were promised.
With a, with a, you know, and last year, our budget for this year, in 2021, we, we made very tight for the, for the public. Like, we really slimmed it down and tried to keep it reasonable and manageable, and then when you have no help from FEMA, and you're trying to get the kids back in, and do what's best, and keep the teachers safe with all the things that we've done to the school to have them here, it, it's, it's been a struggle.
Are you going to recommend?
But it's been my understanding that the state was supposed to have funds.
So we had the CARES Act funds. We got $88,000, which covered, it covered the air ventilators, and it covered our face scanners to thermometers for people to come in.
No, but I thought the state, under Governor Sununu, was supposed to provide funds for schools reopening.
He did, under the CARE, under the CARES Act.
CARES Act, that was it.
That was it?
That was it.
That was it. President, well, President Trump and the government promised all this other stuff that didn't, that didn't work.
Let's not get political, folks.
So that's where we're at.
The government in general.
That's right. The government didn't come through, so a lot of people are hurting right now. But I don't know whose fault it is. Nobody will fess up.
Would you if you were political?
Okay, moving on. Moving on.
Not gavel.
Moving on, we have a policy to look at. JBAA slash ACAC, and it's lengthy. It probably doesn't need a lot of discussion, because this has been pretty much mandated by the state, and they pretty much want it done yesterday.
Has, has everybody on the leadership team read this and understands it?
They all had, not only do they understand it and seen it, but they've also had the Primex training that goes along with it. So, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So I would accept a motion, and, and on, and on this one, when, it's not going to be first read, second read, this is final read.
This is it.
Okay? Because this is what the state wants. They want it done yesterday. So this, if we, if we go forward with this, this is it. Okay? But I don't think we have much of a choice anyway for the court. So a motion to accept this, policy, sexual harassment and sexual violence, motion?
I'll make the motion to accept it.
Move, Frank?
There's a final...
Seconded, Pepper. This is, this is the final, final.
Okay, so, yeah, Lois should explain because...
So basically... So basically, the Hampshire School Board is recommending that all districts adopt this as quickly as possible. And then, they're recommending that the district waives the requirement of the two readings before adopting this policy. The board could also, at the same time, require that the policy be scheduled for review and revision over the succeeding months after the initial adoption. So maybe we waive the two readings, we adopt it, and then we bring it back, like in January, to make any final changes to that.
Or we don't.
Or we don't.
Or we don't.
It's a 21-page document.
I know.
So we're adopting this?
No.
No, the whole thing?
Okay.
That's the former one. We gave you a copy of the former one.
Right, that's what we're adopting.
Yep.
Right. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Little bit of discussion. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Five, zero.
Yeah, we can look at it and make changes.
Okay.
Okay.
We do have to go into non-public, but we should check on the minutes of September 10th.
We have a correction on that, just so you know. And it was under special ed director on page 78. It would just be Dr. Lois De Silva-Napton.
And that was my fault. So have we talked this, I thought, also I said, I didn't pay back. I was...
Not a problem at all.
Maybe you don't pay back.
Nope, thank you. That's all. But otherwise, I think, that was just all I had.
On page 80, the nurse, her name is Mrs. Brand. You can take the T.I. No, thank you.
Okay. Someone make a motion to...
I'll make a motion that we accept these minutes with the corrections. So know that.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Pepper?
Yep.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Five, zero, zero. Okay. Before we go into non-public, is there any other business? Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we go into non-public under RSA 91A3, Roman numeral 2.
Can I have a question?
And I'm not sure what letter it is. It's about negotiations.
X.
F?
X.
S?
X.
X marks the spots.
Hold on, Frank. Hold on. Can I get a second for that?
We'll second yours less, and we'll look at the numbers.
Yeah, well, I know, yeah, we'll do that.
Before we do that, can I just say something? Weren't we supposed to, did we approve the minutes of non-public for the last minute?
No, but that's okay.
No, but we can, we will do that when we come out of this non-public.
The same thing.
Someone remind me. Roll call, Ginny?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Yes, yes, five, zero. So remind me, Frank, when we come out of this non-public that we'll approve the minutes for that non-public. And thank you, Kim.
Colleen.
Colleen, I'm sorry.
For the family, all the signs do it.
Colleen, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian.
Mind muted.
We're good.
Okay. A motion to come out, sorry, a motion to accept the non-public minutes of, when was that date?
September something.
Sorry. The minutes...
September 10th.
September 10th.
I'll make a motion that we accept the non-public, means September 10th.
Move, Frank, seconded, Ginny. Any discussion? All in favor? All. So those are done. Now, do I need to wait? Is this in public? No, okay. So a motion to adjourn?
No, I think we have to do this, because we made a motion to have a meeting on the budget on the 15th. I make a motion that we cancel that meeting.
For Thursday.
On Thursday, and move it to, what's the next meeting?
Whatever the next meeting is.
The 22nd, we'll do it before our budget of 21 to 25.
Okay.
Okay. So that's a motion, seconded, Pepper. All in favor? All. Actually, you should abstain.
No, abstain.
Pepper's going to abstain, because she may not be there. Okay, so now...
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Frank, seconded, Andrea. All those in favor? We are done.
Not bad.
Will meet.